So, moving right along, we are into our public hearing period. As we are required to do by some state laws, we've prepared our, well, we've prepared our 2016 budget and their 2017 budget. Thank you, Mr. Grow. And as we're required to do, we have advertised the public hearing, and so tonight is the period of the public hearing on our budget and an accompanying item, which is the constant yield tax rate. And so for this hearing, we're going to ask Mr. Grow, our Director of Finance, to review the constant yield tax rate and some items of the proposed budget. And then you will have an opportunity to speak and provide your observations or your opinions on either of these two items. We would ask, again, that you provide your name and address for our city clerk. There are some sign-up cards on the, name and address cards on the back table, along with a couple of items, which are some information about the budget as well as the constant yield tax rate. And so, without further commentary, Mr. Grow.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the council. I'm Steve Grow, Finance Director. We're doing two separate public hearings, sort of at the same time, and the decision has been that we're not going to do them as two separate public hearings, that we're going to do them as combined. So if people have comments about one that apply to the other, then we'll, you know, take it all together. So the first one that we're doing is the constant yield tax rate. That's the salmon-colored handout. The constant yield tax rate is contained in state law. The state law on this item is very specific as far as what, how the calculation is done by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation, called ESTAT, and what information they provide to the municipality and what the municipalities need to do in case they're planning to adopt a tax rate in excess of the constant yield tax rate. So to try and get this sort of complicated subject, to try and make it a little easier, an overview would be that ESTAT looks at what they project to be the assessable base for the coming fiscal year, in this case, 2017. And they do that by making some adjustments to the 2016 assessable base, which is shown on the second page of the handout entitled "2016 Constant Yield Tax Rate Certification." So basically, they take last year's assessable base, they subtract the homestead tax credit, they apply last year's tax rate, because they have no way of knowing what this year's tax rate is going to be, so they apply last year's tax rate. And then you get to sort of the if-ier parts. They add half-year new construction, if any. They add estimated full-year new construction, if any. And then they reduce it by estimated abatements and deletions. Now, the problem here is that the estimated full-year new construction is their stab, if you will, at what's going to be coming into our municipal assessment in the coming year. It isn't necessarily inaccurate, it's just that often the timing of that is not as accurate as it could be. So, for example, when we're preparing the budget, we have to calculate basically the same information, but because we are here and we know what projects are in process, we know what projects are going to be completed in time to be assessed for the coming year and what projects aren't going to be assessed for the following year, we have a better handle on what the real assessment is going to be. But regardless, state law requires that you do it this way. So then they come up with a net assessable base for next year. They, using the last year's tax rate, they calculate what the revenue is, and then they back into what the constant yield tax rate would need to be in order to give the city the same dollars in real property tax that the city received in prior year's real property tax. So in this case, the constant yield tax rate that they've calculated is .3199, okay? Our current projected tax rate is 33 and 1/2 cents, so therefore, we are penny and 1/2, basically, over the constant yield tax rate. Now, looking back, over the last 15 years, the way that the constant yield is calculated is, it's obviously calculated based on last year's tax rate. So in the last seven years, the city has been exempt from the constant yield tax rate in five out of those seven years. That's because the city's tax rate was, in actuality, was less than the constant yield tax rate. So the city's budget and its tax rate is going along, sort of, on one track. The constant yield is going along on the other track, and they don't always merge together. And that's why some years, you may have to do a constant yield tax rate hearing, and other years, you don't. So this year, because our rate, our projected rate is 33 and 1/2 cents and the constant yield is 3199, we have to do a constant yield tax rate. So the state gives a specific wording that has to be in the ad. The ad has to be an eighth of a page, in Font 12. It has to appear in, not in the classified section or not in the legal notices section of the newspaper. So this advertisement, that's on the first page of your handout, was published in the Washington Post, in the Metro section, on April the 28th, 2016. The ad cost us approximately $2,700, which is high. We used to advertise it in the Gazette, which was a lot cheaper. But anyway, you're required to advertise, you're required to do it in a certain way to comply with the statute, and then, once you advertise, you have to give ESTAT the full page out of the newspaper in order to prove that you held, that you advertised it to their specifications. Also, before you advertise it, you submit your ad to them for approval before you even advertise it. So it's a, you know, it's a complicated process. Many municipalities and counties, for that matter, you know, it just, it goes along, and some years, you have to advertise for the constant yield, and other years, you don't. And so, most of the jurisdictions feel that their budgeting process is a lot more accurate than the constant yield, and so therefore, they're not as concerned that, for a particular year, they might be in excess of the constant yield. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, Councilmember Kabir.
Thank you for your presentation. So I'm looking at the advertisement that appeared on the Washington Post, like, April 28th. And the language, as you were, I think that was one of my questions, that it came from the state, correct, the format and the language?
Absolutely. Every word, every comma, even the number of decimal places where you say, "will increase by 4.7 percent." Actually, the figure is, you know, about three decimal places past that, but the state law says that you have to say, you have to advertise it with three decimal places there.
Is this something that has started from this administration, state administration, new governor?
No, this has been going on for more than 20 years.
Okay.
And most jurisdictions, I mean, this is talked about periodically, every couple of years, particularly, I guess, the biggest complaint that I see from the Finance Director's side and from my fellow Finance Directors, whether it be a county or a municipality, is that the title of the ad is "City of College Park, Maryland: Notice of a Proposed Real Property Tax Increase." Well, that is not really the case. We are proposing the same tax rate that we've had since fiscal year 2014, okay? But state law says that this is what the ad, this is the heading of the ad, and you can't change it. Finance Directors, Maryland GFOA, and others have approached the MML to see if they would be interested in putting forward some sort of legislative action in order to sort of tone down the ad some, make it a little less inflammatory, make it a little more understandable to the readers, and sadly, MML has not been willing to take this on.
So I understand that. I think the rationale behind it, and I can't speak on behalf of them, I think the rationale is probably that the residents will be paying more next year because of the increased assessment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you tell us how much more they'll be paying in total tax and also the city's portion of the tax?
Well, the constant yield ad indicates that the tax rate is 4.7% higher than the constant yield tax rate and will generate $348,593 in additional property tax revenue. Now, that's spread over the whole city, that's spread over residential as well as commercial, that's spread over owner-occupied as well as non-owner-occupied. Based on an estimate, based on an estimated assessment of $300,000 for an owner-occupied residential property, my calculation was that the, that property owner, not taking into account homestead tax credit, would pay approximately $45.30 additional per year. Now, if the, if the property is owner-occupied and the property has increased in value, the assessment has increased more than 4%, then they would not pay that full amount. And the other thing is, in the email strings that have been going back and forth, that 4.7% is an overall average of all 4,500 properties in the city. It's not, it's not that each property is going up 4.7% in value. Some properties might be going up less, some properties might be going up more. But it's saying that, overall, when you compare the total assessment from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year 17, they're projecting this 4.7% increase totaling $348,000. But the homestead tax credit is 10% for the state, 5% for the county, 4% for the city. So therefore, city tax could not go up more than 4% over last year's city tax.
Right, thank you. The residents will be also paying taxes to the other jurisdictions, like state, county, Maryland, Park and Planning, and, I believe, WSSC as well. In total, for a $300,000 house, how much are residents going to be paying in total?
I don't have that figure off the top of my head.
I believe it's $1.79 for a $100 property.
I don't have that figure. I mean, the other thing is that the homestead tax credit is different for each of those jurisdictions. So, for example, you know, ours can't go up more than 4%, the counties can't go up more than 5%, the states can't go up more than 10%. Park and Planning has no homestead tax credit, so theirs could go up, you know, if a property increased, I don't know, 20% in value or something, Park and Planning's tax could go up more than those homestead rates, because they don't have a homestead tax credit. So it's sort of a moving target, because every property is different, and some of the properties may have old homestead tax credit that they didn't fully use up while the market was going down, and so that's available to them also, which might end up reducing the increase for the coming year. So every property is different. We don't have access to the individual homestead tax credit for each property. We only know what the estimated homestead tax credit is for the city, and that is $47,906,624 of assessable base, but we have no idea how that breaks down.
Right, thank you. One final question I have. So if, if the council decides to change the tax rate, the city portion of the tax rate, that the time would be May 24th, council meeting, when we will approve the budget, at the same time we'll be doing it? If we want to adjust the tax rate?
Well, I didn't hear a question. I heard a statement. You said, "if the city wants to adjust," then what's the second half of that sentence?
When can you do it?
The only time you can do it is May 24th, before the budget's adopted. Now, I need to mention two things related to that. One is that Prince George's County's tax billing system can only accommodate three decimal places. So if you, if you were to adopt a tax rate of .3, of .31.99 cents, they will round that to .32.0 cents, which is in excess of the constant yield. Now, that doesn't make any difference, because you've already held the public hearing and advertised and done all those things. But if you're going to adopt the constant yield rate, it needs to be .31.9 cents because of the rounding problem. The other thing is that not only are you losing this real property tax revenue, but the personal property tax rate has to be 2 and 1/2 times the real property rate. So currently, it's 33.5 for real property and 83.8 for personal property. So if you reduce the real property rate, you also have to reduce the personal property rate.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a greater loss of revenue, if you will.
And also need to adjust our budget, because we'll be, we'll be reducing our source of revenue.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kabir, and thank you, Mr. Grow. And as we said, we're in the, we're in the public hearing and we have two items to talk about.
Okay, let me go through the budget part, which is, in my opinion, easier, because it's something you're more familiar with. So the budget is in a blue packet, revised operating and capital budget. Just to, for terminology purposes, because there's some schedules in here that show proposed and revised. Proposed budget was the city manager's proposed budget that was issued on March 31st, and it was our starting point for this process. Then there were two budget work sessions held on April 7th and 14th, Saturday work sessions, and during that time, the council made adjustments to the city manager's proposed budget totaling $52,000 and some change, which we reduced, which we deducted from the million-dollar CIP transfer for City Hall. So where we are now is the exact dollar amount that was on the board at the end of the second of those budget work sessions, and so we call that the revised budget. So there's the proposed budget, that's the city manager's budget. The revised budget is what we're having the public hearing on, and the adopted budget will be whatever is adopted on May the 24th. So in this, in this packet, there's a copy of the ordinance, 16002, that was introduced on April 25th, and following that is a summary of changes between the proposed budget and the revised budget. Those are the items that were put up on the board during the Saturday budget work sessions. Following that are, is a chart of all the revenues and expenditures, going back four years, showing fiscal year 2014 actual, fiscal year 2015 actual, fiscal year 16 adjusted budget, and year-to-date actuals through the time we ran this, and then fiscal year 17 budget, proposed and revised. Then there's pie charts for the sources of revenue with percentage for each. There's pie charts for the expenditures by department with percentages. There's a pie chart for the categories of expenditures, such as personnel, operating, and capital. There's a bar chart for types of revenue, major types of revenue with comparison to years. Then there's a list of the inter-fund transfers to the CIP totaling $2,485,440. The largest one of that is City Hall Project, $952,014. Then there's a list of the CIP projects with what their total projected expenditures are and schedule of funding sources for the CIP projects. So all of this, you know, has been available to the public since March 31st, when the budget was issued to the mayor and council. It was posted to the website at that time. We announced pretty much everywhere we could that copies of the budget book, either in book form or CD, were available at City Hall and at Davis Hall. Some people did come and pick it up. Obviously, some people looked at it on the website. The advertisement for this public hearing on the budget ordinance was in the same, was in the Washington Post on the same day as the constant yield, April 28th, although it was in the legal notices section, not in the Metro section, saving us some money. So anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the budget portion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grow, and seeing no questions from the council panel here. I do have a list of folks who've signed up to speak on either of these two subjects, and I'm going to, I'm going to start with Mr. Joel Ryerson, who has signed up to speak on the constant yield tax rate. So, Mr. Ryerson.
I didn't pay attention to that, to that, um, subject, but I would, for the record, my name is Joel Ryerson, and I live in 8611 LeBlanc Drive, Adelphi Mall, 20783. I, um, talked to one of the council, city council members earlier, and I had an issue with the buses, so, and some of, that one particular bus, the R3, got eliminated, so we're trying to work out the problem, and hopefully, they can solve it. And I did see the website, some of the website was incorrect. The R3 is no longer running, it's on that website, on the transportation section. And, um, the 86 doesn't go near the green belt, it goes down Route 1, High Hill, Riverdale, and Mount Rain, in DC. So, and I didn't see anything on the capital budget about the bus service, so maybe they can add it to that, to that package.
Okay, all right. So, thank you, Mr. Ryerson. The city doesn't have bus service directly, so, but you've spoken with one of our council persons, and maybe there has to be some further discourse with that person, and maybe we can come back with some, some help for you.
Well, hopefully, then, she can help me. She was saying she was going to help me and check with, and then funding and stuff, so hopefully, in the future, they're going to get the bus service back to Bellway Plaza and Prince George's, because the R3 used to have direct connections right to the, to children's centers and the metro stations, so, I thank you for your time, and you have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have Mr. David Gray, who signed up to speak on both the budget and the constant yield tax rate. So, Mr. Gray.
Not to be presumptuous, but you may want to just talk about one topic, have the people speak on one topic, and then follow up on the second, because I want to speak on both, and I probably need three minutes to speak on both topics, because they're related, but they're wholly separate, and they're also individual items.
Okay, so you're going to speak now on constant yield?
That's right.
Thank you.
And then, then other people can speak, and then I'll talk about the budget. I'm in opposition to raising the constant, you need to push it down. I don't want you to raise my taxes, basically, it's a simple enough statement. The fact is, is that the current, the proposed budget has $950,000 for spending for City Hall that, basically, if you ask the people, we don't want, and you don't even have solid plans for it yet. So this effectively is putting money away for the future, for a future expense that isn't defined. So there is no need to raise, you know, tax, the tax burden on city residents already had, who had their taxes raised for the county last year, who are facing, you know, a possible 10% PEPCO rate increase, just to spend more money on a building that we haven't yet, you know, you don't need this additional funding, basically. So I would propose that you keep it at the .319%, that you just don't have a compelling need for it, given the fact that the City Hall plans are still, you know, have been dragging on for years. You've spent, what, $425,000 on plans that you've already, basically, tossed out, and the City Hall won't be built for another at least five years, I guess, if on current funding levels. And one could also say that the funding method is patently unfair in the fact that I'm prepaying for a City Hall that I may never have a use for, and that we've issued a bond for a garage that I also have no specific use for, but at least that's being amortized over 20 years or 25 years. But now I'm basically being forced to pay for a City Hall that I may not be a resident here, or at the rates that they're going, I might not, I might die a natural death before that City Hall gets built. Personally, I don't think it needs to get built at all, but nevertheless, the fact that it's been dragging on for such a long time, putting, salting away money for this phantom product, project that's ill-defined is not a good enough reason to, you know, raise the constant yield rate thing. So that's it for this time, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to take the suggestion that we talk about constant yield tax rate in these, in these comments, and we'll, we'll circle back. And I think I'm getting some of, some of my council colleagues suggesting that we'd go that way also. And so, following that, I have Ms. Suchitra Balachandran signed up to speak on the constant yield tax rate.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening, and could you, oh yeah, raised, thank you.
My name is Suchitra Balachandran, I live at 9320 St. Andrews Place. I'd like to first thank Steve Grow for his discussion. I always find it very useful to talk to Mr. Grow on any financial matters in the city, and today's explanation of the constant yield rate is no exception. But I'm here to state my position on the record in favor of a constant yield tax rate. In other words, I'm asking the council to vote no on the proposed increase in property taxes, and my reasons are as follows. Unless the city is able to articulate and clearly justify a lack of funds for essential services, I think an increase in property tax values should not simply result in additional revenues for the city. There's a reason the state requires this hearing, and I hope the council will take these comments to heart. So right now, you're telling us that the additional $350,000 that will result, if the tax rate is kept constant, will be set aside for a new City Hall. Let me remind you of the following. On October 28th, 2014, the Board of the West College Park Civic Association, of which I was then the president and still am the president, wrote a letter to mayor and council about City Hall Project. In that letter, we said the following. "The Board asks for detailed information on how the new City Hall construction would be financed, the source of the capital, the repayment schedule, and the likely interest rate, the period over which the loan would be repaid, whether the city expects to make payments from its existing budget with the current tax stream, or if the city anticipates having to increase taxes, and if yes, by how much and from whom." This was October 28th, 2014. As President of the West College Park Civic Association, I can tell you, the Board received no response from the mayor and council to that letter. I don't recall any discussion on the source of funding or the impact on the taxpayer during the council discussions. during the council discussions on a new City Hall. Given the lack of discussion to identify a funding stream for a capital project, I think it would be presumptuous for the council to simply say that they will keep the windfall from the increase in property values towards a new City Hall. The city, in my opinion, is not being particularly frugal with taxpayer monies. For instance, the city recently found an 80K additional amount of monies that were budgeted for the College Park Academy and were not needed. And the council recently voted to simply increase the educational grants by $60,000. If we are accumulating reserves for City Hall, why not add this money to the reserves? There are other instances of council spending that have seemed frivolous and not sufficiently thought through in recent years. So I would like to urge the council to appoint a citizen committee to look into all the discretionary spending that the council undertakes and to make recommendations on the usefulness of their spending to College Park residents. So finally, I would like to urge the council to be very mindful that the monies gathered from property taxes come from hard-working residents who deserve to feel that the city spends its monies well, and the absence of any justification from the city for a real need for increased revenues, this money should stay in the pocket of residents. Thank you.
Moving forward, we have Mr. Dorch, Mr. David Dorch, signed to speak on the constant yield tax rate. Mr. Dorch.
Again, Dave Dorch, 4607 Calvert Road. I'd like to ask Mr. Groh a question. He explained what was required under this constant yield about the publication and things like that. But would he explain to us what the constant yield, why it was put in, and when it was put in?
I don't have that information available right now.
Okay. I think you mentioned about, you said something about 20 years ago?
It's been more than 20 years.
Right. Okay. I was there when they put this in. Not a part of the program, but I was a taxpayer at the time. And one of the reasons they put this in was because taxes kept going up, 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 constantly. So they said, "Stop. We don't want this to happen anymore." And that's pretty much what this does, does it not?
Really doesn't. It requires you to advertise in a specific way, and it requires you to hold a public hearing, and then it still weaves total discretion to the mayor and council to adopt any tax rate they want, whether it's below the constant yield, at the constant yield, or above the constant yield. There are no limitations on the council's action once the public hearing has been held.
My recollection was the reason they put this in was to kind of keep these tax increases down and to stop the proliferation that they had back then, 25, 20 years ago. That's my recommendation. I was just wondering if you had a better. Okay. The deal here is, I believe that we should not increase this tax rate. Remember, we just, someone talked about seniors earlier here. One of the problems we have with seniors living in their houses and staying there, the rate of inflation lately has been kind of mild, about 1% or 2%, but we keep jacking up. You know, Exxon just hit us with a big tax, I mean, a rate increase in our electric lines, you know, after we got bribed, that's 70, 50, 80 million dollars, you know, to make that thing work. Anyway, we shouldn't be doing this increasing in these taxes. People with fixed incomes have a very difficult time doing this. That's just one of the things. The other thing is that, in fact, with all the new construction in College Park that has taken place in the last couple of years, and all the construction that's happening right now, all up and down Route 1, most of this is multifamily, commercial, that type of stuff, this increase in the city's tax base, the residential properties, to my way of thinking, should be getting a tax decrease, not an increase. We should be using some of this money, this additional money, that's increasing the city's tax base from all this commercial stuff, to help offset the cost of living here in the city, as a city resident. So I'd like the council not only not to increase this, but I'd like them to think about how we could kind of reduce the taxes on single-family properties here, you know, and take advantage of all this new construction we have coming in here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dorch. So next on the constant yield tax rate list to speak is Mr. Brad Herbert. Mr. Herbert?
I think there was an extended hour.
Okay. So you choose not to speak. Okay. Thank you. All right. So I have no others on the, signed up for the constant yield tax rate at this point. And I see Mr. Gregory raising his hand. So, yes, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you very much. Oscar Gregory, 9253, Limestone Place. The presentation by Mr. Groh is pretty interesting. I'm not quite sure what the font has to do with the explanation of, I mean, what he said was, sounds what I understand. But the bottom line is that as the property values go up, the constant yield rate actually offsets this increase in, the increase in revenue taxes coming from properties. And so that, it goes to offset it so that, so that, that the same revenue stream that occurred last year paid for the same kinds of services that were cost last year. And so, essentially and effectively, the S stat says, well, in order to offset, you have to, the rate needs to be lowered. The problem I have with this is that the services, the tax revenue stream is increasing, the property tax amount is increasing, yet the city manager in the proposed, what I read was proposed budget, said, told all departments to hold the cost at zero. Now, I understand that the only thing that really went up is the insurance, as it should be. But if, so if the costs are the same as last year, then why in God's name are we collecting more money this year? You know, I get the point that, you know, the property values increased because the state of Maryland said so. But what is it go to pay for? Certainly not paying for any more services. So what I do find is, I find a lot of, and I've spoken to this before, I find a lot of tax credits going to businesses, rewards for them building things in here, going to not, going to everybody else but, going to businesses except for the residents. And I concur with the rest of the folks here that are opposed to the keeping the tax rate, the city College Park tax rate at 335. And I think it needs to, it needs to be adjusted to what the state of Maryland had at 331. Now, if you can, if the city can say that they can provide services to residents that are over and beyond from last year to that extent, then you have an argument. But you're collecting monies and giving, and giving operation monies to businesses for tax credits and not collecting from them. So you're actually dipping into the funds that should be coming to us, to the neighborhoods. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. All right. So I don't believe I have any others signed up to talk about the constant yield tax rate. So I do have a list of folks who want to talk about our proposed budget. And we'll start with Mr. Gray, Mr. David Gray.
David Gray, 7306 Reckless Drive. Basically, just sort of reviewing through the budget overall, these are some comments or suggestions or basically, and, you know, thank you for all being here, given that some of you weren't. You know, that, you know, it's only $17 million. So it'd be nice if, one meeting a year for the public gets to talk about the budget. Y'all should all be here, but thank you for the people who are. And we're currently spending about $30,000 for a state house lobbyist, and I believe that was started maybe two or three years ago as sort of a trial, or let's see what this person can do. And, you know, I don't know how successful it is, I'm not in qualification for a judge, but it's $30,000, and I think there needs to be a little bit more explanation of what this, the goals for this person's supposed to be, or how do we decide we're getting our money's worth for this? That these things can sort of run into problems of, "Well, I'm paying this dude to do this thing for me, but you might have gotten that money without that dude." So it's hard to say, are you getting your money's worth? There's also $30,000 for statistically significant resident survey. And, you know, I'm not a, I know a fair bit about marketing, it doesn't have to be dangerous. And the fact that you're saying you want a statistically significant survey is basically saying you want a result, and you're getting a survey to get to that result. Statistically significant means, is something you get to by the data that is. You don't say, "I want a statistically significant result." You get that result by the nature of the questions. But you can't necessarily predestine that. You can make a statistically valid sampling of a population or things like that. I could talk a lot about this, but I won't. But I'm just saying, that sort of set off bells in my head, because it makes me think that there's nobody in this building that even knows how to bid this out properly. You will find a consultant to take your $30,000. But, you know, I think there's an awful lot of money for, you know, a survey that you probably should run 95% of the same questions you ran last time, because the only way you're going to know that you did, how things are changing over time. And if you want help, I can give you that help. You know, looking at, you know, council travel, there's $31,000. Your catering bill is $8,000. You're only giving meals on wheels $6,500. You know, I don't view this budget as being particularly austere in some sections. So I'm just merely pointing out that, you know, y'all are doing well comparatively. I think money is rolling in, but that doesn't mean you get to blow it on anything just because you feel like it. And similarly, you know, I'm real not thrilled about spending money on the City Hall that we have not had, you know, last public discussion on this was three years ago, and they basically told you to use the old school. And, you know, we've already spent $425,000 on designs that, you know, we haven't, aren't using, and it looks like we're going to spend another $300,000 for whatever new thing. And I don't know what's happening with the administration of the main, of the entire Maryland college system, but that's moving up to Baltimore. And I understand that the new mayor project would have a university component, and what I'm getting at is that they might have a lot more office space shortly if they have to move a bunch of people to Baltimore. And that would sort of erode the value of anything that the university might want to do here. So I think you need to talk a lot more about the City Hall, rather than just sort of saying, "Oh, let's jam a million dollars and hire a bunch of consultants." So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. So we're back to Ms. Naza, Ms. Carol Naza. Do you, Naza, yes. She's signed on the...
She is no longer here.
Okay. All right. So we'll move to, and so Ms. Martin was also signed up here. And so we'll move to Mr. Dorch again.
I noticed the budget this year is $17.8 million. $17.8 million. Be interesting to go back and see from the time the city of College Park was made a city, how long it took us to get to 10 million bucks. And I guarantee it was more than five years. The problem I have here is the rate of increase with these budgets each and every year is just getting way up there. And I have not had a chance to go through this entire budget line, I'd buy a line and see where all the money's going. But the rate of inflation is about 1.2, maybe 2%. And we're going from, and right here before me, 2014, the actual budget was $14 million. And today, it's $17.8 million. That seems to be an awfully, awfully big increase. And again, I go back to, you know, these people, fixed budgets and things like that, they just don't have this kind of money. And I'm wondering where the city, it seems like we just have so much money, we don't know what to do with it all, other than where can we spend it? How fast can we spend it? And what I'm saying is, we are very lucky to be able to have this revenue stream here in College Park. Let's not be abusing it and trying to see if we can spend every dollar we can get our hands on. This budget is way too high. This should be at least a million bucks less than what we have in here right now. And you say, "Well, if we do that, somebody's going to lose money out of somebody's budget." Yeah, that's the way it happens. But I'm not picking on anybody in particular. I'm just saying that overall, the rate of budget increases, for me anyway, in this city, just seems to be headed straight up, and there seems to be no relief in sight. Is next year's budget, the 2018, are we going to be talking 20 million bucks then? I think we really need to think very carefully. You guys are the stewards of the money here. We, the taxpayers, the voters, ask you guys to look into this for us, to guide us in spending this money. We want the city to operate efficiently. We want a good city, but at a reasonable cost. And I think we're getting past that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dorch. Any others in the audience who would care to speak on either of these two public hearing Seeing none, when we'll declare that this public hearing has been held, and we'll move on to the remaining parts of our agenda.